Noblesville Common Council meeting to order for Tuesday, December 22nd, 2020. Before we get started, I do want to acknowledge that Hamilton County and the city of Noblesville lost a great man this last week. Barry McNulty, former city councilman and county health administrator, passed away. Just a good man, great leader, and I do want to start our meeting tonight with a moment of silence for Barry McNulty. Now Darren, would you please lead us, or Mr. Peterson, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I am of the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, and indivisible, infinite, and ever to be.
Mr. Peterson. Due to the COVID restrictions, seating is limited here to 50. There is a public call-in number for anyone watching, 1-469-998-6201 is that number. Again, the call-in number, 1-469-998-6201. And when prompted, you'll have to enter the following conference ID, which is 479-296-169-pound. Ms. Cummings, would you do the roll call, please?
Mr. Air. Mr. Boyce.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. O'Connor.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Ms. Wiles.
Present.
Mr. Hampton.
Here.
Mr. President, you have a call.
Thank you very much. A little Star Wars accent time. Okay, we have approval of the minutes for the December 8th meeting.
It's moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Approval of tonight's agenda.
Mr. President, I would move to amend the agenda to add miscellaneous three, council to receive a summary of fiscally neutral fourth quarter appropriations, appropriation transfers pursuant to Resolution RC 0320.
We have a motion and a second to amend the agenda. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
President, I would move to approve the agenda as amended.
We have motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is approved as amended. Petitions or comments by citizens, I'm not sure if anyone's on the phone. No, we're good. There might be one. Are they all queued up and ready to go? If I acknowledge them now. Caller 7238, are you on the line? Caller 7238, do they have to hit unmute? That's one thing that sometimes we have trouble is if you star six to unmute yourself. Star six to unmute. Caller 7238, are you there? Maybe they just want to listen. Okay, moving on. No other, if anyone else here would like to talk, there are forms outside the hall, but I do have a special presentation, someone to acknowledge tonight, the Community Opioid Prevention Effort, led by Monica Greer and Kelly Gunn from the Hamilton County Council on Alcohol and Other Drugs. Would you two like to present this evening?
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Can we remove masks?
Yes, you can. And for the sake of the deputy clerk, could you please say, say your name and where you think you need to address to? Yes, your addresses. You can probably just do your work.
Okay. All right, I'm Monica Greer. Hi, Megan. I am with the Council on Alcohol and Other Drugs. I'm the executive director. My address is 1 Hamilton County Square, Noblesville, 46060. And I'm Kelly Gunn. I am the program coordinator for the COPE program, and you can use the exact same address. We go for simple.
Welcome. Glad to have you here.
Thank you. All right, so for those of you that are not familiar with the Hamilton County Council on Alcohol and Other Drugs, Will, you set it very nicely.
I'm learning.
Good job. We are Substance Abuse Treatment Prevention and Intervention and Criminal Justice. We provide grants, we provide assistance resources, we write grants. Kelly will talk about our COPE program that Will mentioned, and we will talk a little bit about overdose mapping. And I know we only have five minutes, so I'm going to let Kelly take over and explain the program.
Thank you, Monica. So like Will mentioned, our COPE program stands for Community Opioid Prevention Efforts. For the past two years, we have been a BJA Bureau of Justice Assistance funded grant program that allowed us to create quick response teams here in Hamilton County. So we have a quick response team in every community here in the county, including Noblesville. Those teams consist of an EMS paramedic, law enforcement officer, and a peer recovery specialist from Aspire. The goal of the program is for us to go into the homes of Narcan-administered opioid overdose survivors within 72 hours of that opioid overdose event to help get them into the appropriate level of care and treatment, to provide support, and to build rapport with our first responders. So we are partnered with your Noble Act program and the Noblesville Police Department. We work very closely with Officer Ben Luger and Chief James Mackey, EMS Chief James Mackey. We have done, as of mid-December, we've done 47 home visits in Hamilton County. Noblesville continues to be our highest number of home visits, referrals, and overdoses for opiates. And so we are very thankful to have your support and your participation so that we can help this population of folks get into the appropriate levels of care. As Monica mentioned, we have a program that is ran by the Hamilton County Health Department called OD MAP. I believe all of you have a copy of that in front of you, and there's one on the screen now. What you see, first page, is all of the overdoses from January, January 1 of 2020 to December 16th of 2020 in the Noblesville area zip codes, I'm sorry. So you see 62 suspected overdoses. This map includes all substances, not just opiates. We've had 17 fatal overdoses in Noblesville and 40 naloxone administrations. Some of this data may be a little bit off as we're continuing to compile from agencies like the hospitals and things like that, but that is what the Health Department has compiled thus far. The second page you'll see is countywide overdoses. So you'll see 111 suspected overdoses, with 31 of those being fatal, and 73 naloxone administrations. One thing I failed to mention on the home visit is that we do give out two free Narcan kits to every participant, whether they enroll in the program or not, which the program is completely voluntary. And so they are allowed, or if they're willing, they can keep those two Narcan kits, and then if they need more, we are willing to distribute that to them and their families as well. We also wrap around services for not just the overdose survivor, but their family members in the home in efforts to help them learn how to cope with what's going on at home, to better serve that loved one that's dealing with substance use disorder. So we really try to be wraparound services for the family, not just the overdose survivor.
Is there anything else you want to add? Just, right now, we're working with opiates. We hope to, in 2021, get an additional federal grant to be able to serve and help with all other drugs, not just opiates. So that's why Councilman Hampton said it would go to prevention instead, or Community Overdose Prevention Efforts.
Yes, so that's what the name will change to.
So we can keep COPE. And then the second page is just months, days of the week, time of day. Jim Ginder with the Health Department prepares all of this data for us. We're the only county in the state that uses this type of program, so we're very fortunate that he keeps that data for us, and it's updated daily. So it's very helpful, helpful to us to where we can see where it's happening in the community, where it's happening in other communities around the state, and even the nation, so we can kind of see if a surge is coming to our area. So it's very helpful to us. Any questions?
Questions at all? Good question. If I read this right, over half of the overdoses and half of the fatalities in Hamilton County are in our two zip codes.
Yes, that is correct. Yes, and like Kelly mentioned, we, just over the last two years, we started gathering this information. We are trying to collaborate with hospitals to get more data from them, because sometimes they are not brought in by ambulance, EMS, fire, or police are not in knowledge of that. So we really hope that we can get better numbers next year as we collaborate. We've collaborated with all the hospitals, all the local hospitals, but just getting that data would really be helpful. I would guess that this number is at least 25% more, maybe even more than that, that we just don't have the data.
You mentioned Noble Act. How much has that been just a positive influence to this whole?
Unbelievable. We can't say enough about it. We are so fortunate to have Noble Act and work in collaboration with Ben Luger. He is amazing. He really has the passion to want to help people, and it just filters out. It's, you know, we just are so fortunate. And so thank you for your leadership and allowing us to do that, and just great collaboration.
Air for that.
Yes, thank you.
I know that was a big initiative of yours. Thank you. I know the Narcan boxes have been proven successful to save lives right here in Noblesville.
Yes, we first targeted businesses that we knew had overdoses happen in the past. So Ben Luger was very helpful with that. He helped me get, distribute the boxes and identify where places it would be most beneficial to target first. Businesses have been very responsive. We have most of our boxes in Noblesville right now. We're hoping to get those out further in the county and the other communities, but just another way that we can help hopefully prevent death and get the person into treatment.
And Schwartz's bait and tackle was our first business that adopted the Narcan emergency boxes.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Comment, yeah, Mr. O'Connor.
President, just comment. Thank you, ladies, for bringing us in here, and it is, as Mr. Peterson pointed out, you don't, you don't want to lead the pack with these kinds of things, but how do you coordinate with, once you've made the visits at the home, how do you coordinate with Aspire? How do you try to facilitate further non-use as opposed to continued use? I mean, that's, this is great, and it's preventative, but what do you do on the back end? Does Aspire jump into that, or?
Sure, so I'll jump in and explain that. So on the home visits, those three people that I mentioned, the EMS paramedic, the law enforcement officer, and the peer recovery specialist go in, talk to the person, assess their need for treatment, and they will make that referral right at the home visit. So if that person is receptive to going into treatment right then, they will make that referral, whether that's an outpatient referral to Aspire, or if they need inpatient or residential care, they are facilitating that right then and there on the home visit. And then after the home visit, and after that person either engages in treatment or gets out of residential treatment, our peer recovery specialist continues outreach to them and continues to engage with them to not only see if that person is still in need of additional support and services, but the family as well. So they are educating and supporting the family while that person's away at treatment, and they are continuing to engage and check in with that person, because the peer recovery specialist, if you're not familiar, is someone in active recovery themselves. So they've walked this journey themselves, they have quite a bit of sobriety under their belts, and then they are now walking that recovery journey with our referral and our participant.
And as you can imagine, not everyone is receptive to our program, but we get them at their most vulnerable point. They died, they were revived, so we're hoping that at that moment is, is when they would want to get the treatment. But some of them say, I'm fine, I don't have a problem, and we're okay with that. We give them the resources, we've got folders of all kinds of resources that, not only treatment, but you know, other things that they may need, food banks, assistance with rent, that type of thing. And as Kelly mentioned, the family members. There's meetings, recovery meetings, there's support groups for family members. So we want to make sure we provide all the resources that might be helpful to them. And as Kelly mentioned, two Narcan kits in case they do continue to use an overdose, they can be revived and then hopefully get us back, so.
Any questions? Monica, thank you.
Thank you for what you did.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Moving on, this is not on the agenda, but we do an award every year, it's been going on quite a while, and it's called the Stake in the Ground Award that we want to do at this point in our agenda, and Councilman Boyce does a lot of work on this, and we appreciate that, but I would just.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, you took the words out of my mouth. Wanted to talk a little bit about the Stake in the Ground Award. This is a award that dates back about 25 years with our city, back to Alan Hines actually is the one that started it. And basically, the reason it's called the Stake in the Ground, you can see it actually is a stake for the ground, and it's given to the employee of the city of Noblesville that we think actually put the stake in the ground, saying Noblesville needs to be the best place, and really does something out of this world to try and make it a better place and a better community. So the way it works is the council nominates an employee each year that they think that should receive it, and then we all do an anonymous voting system so that we all vote on it, and then we can name our winner. And I'm always in awe and fascinated each year to find out who is going to get it and where it goes, and this year is no exception. In fact, it's quite even more different this year, like everything else has, I think, been different in 2020. I think in years past, there's times where we're not even sure we would have even needed or thought of what a public safety director would do. And now this year, between the COVID, between the national rioting, between everything else we have, then I think that all of us in this room and all of us in this community can be very thankful that we are safe here and that we have a safe community, and that Mr. Connect has done a phenomenal job keeping us that way and keeping us as COVID-free and as safe as we can in this community as possible. So with all of the challenges that have come forward this year, then we just want to thank you for how excellently you have handled things and how you have taken this, and we want to commend you and thank you and nominate you with this year, or award you this year with the 2020 Stake in the Ground Award from Noblesville.
Darren, do you want to say anything at all?
Give you a chance, right? You're not going to turn that down.
I know this is, it's the December meeting, everybody's ready to get ready for the holidays, and I'm very humbled by that. It was not necessary, quite honestly, I've had the easiest job of all of us sitting in this room, and I just have tried to shepherd the efforts, but the men and women in the uniform and this staff and this administration, all of you sitting here and supporting the movements we're going through, Council Wiles at the hospital, the efforts you've done, the fact that I was mentioned in this, it just, one, it's an honor, but it pales in comparison to the efforts of everybody else. And this truly is a team effort, and everyone's done very well, and I'm proud to be a part of this team. I honestly hope that this state can be used to drive right through the heart of COVID and we get back to that. Thank you very much. Standby, I think Mr. Harry, do you want to organize us? Do you want Mr. Boyce and I down in front with him? The other council members come in behind.
Okay.
Up here. That's on, probably. Mr. Hampton, we have one more thing to sneak into that gym while you. On behalf of the city council and all of Noblesville, we want to thank you for your year as president, and in a year that we knew you would step up and be a good president, we didn't have any idea what you were stepping up to, or into, and it has been, we're going to have a lot of asterisks this year, but one, one that we will not have is you were a really great president in a really tough year, and thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have to move again, or is this okay? Do we have to move again or is this okay?
No, you are.
And thank you, everyone. It has been an interesting year. Moving forward, we have council committee reports. I think all we have is finance, right? Mr. O'Connor, is anybody else with a committee partner? Nobody else? Mr. O'Connor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance met December 17th. The first item that we talked about was the real estate acquisition, which is on the agenda this evening. I believe it's miscellaneous number one, but it comes to you with a favorable recommendation. I'll allow Mr. Murray to go into the details related to that real estate acquisition. Talked about a parking enforcement budget overrun, which is Transfer 2620. Mr. Barris, Mr. Spalding will dig into that. Suffice to say that there was a bit of an accounting issue there from a mechanics perspective. It's not a significant amount of money, but I think we now got a handle on it. So $21,000 appropriation, but I'll allow our experts to delve into the detail. Good news, the CARES Act reimbursement, you may have seen that the state also went back and decided that they were going to provide additional CARES Act monies to cities and municipalities that had applied for it. So Noblesville was awarded an additional 10% or $204,000 from the CARES Act funding. Excuse me. So I'd rather not be dealing with COVID, but if you have to deal with it, it's nice to have some additional funding that came from the federal money that went to the state. So that's a little bit of a positive ray of light. And I think we've all seen that the administration has gone out with the small business resiliency grants. We had a little conversation about how all that was going to be funded. If you recall, we thought about using CARES Act money to reimburse that, but the Indiana Finance Authority would prefer that we actually use that money to reimburse payroll expenses for public safety. So we had a little conversation about that, just to clarify how we were going to handle that from a funding perspective, but at the end of the day, the money is somewhat fungible, but we had all decided to fund the grants and all those CARES Act dollars really went into funding the payroll expenses. So the surety bond ordinance, which we'll see, it's a necessity to have certain individuals, the judge, the clerk, the controller bonded by law. So we looked at that. It's something we may need to expand a bit because of the number of folks that fall in that category, but it's not of significant cost to the city. But it does provide us some protection in the event there is an issue that has to do with those individuals. Perhaps the most important part of the meeting, Tim Berry of Crowell presented the findings on the internal control review that the mayor and the administration engaged them to do. And it was very enlightening. We've come a long way as a city from a finance perspective, but there's still things that we need to do to continue to move forward in our overall finance and accounting and process and procedures. And I won't go into all that detail here, given the limited amount of time, but suffice to say that there's a lot of good things that have happened over the last, say, eight to 10 years and there's more things that we need to do to get ourselves in a position where we're more efficient. I think we've been more transparent than we ever have from a finance perspective, but this really goes beyond being transparent. I think it's more a function of internal integrity and dual controls and all the things that are related there too. So there'll be more coming on that. I know the mayor and the deputy mayor and Mr. Spalding are going to get together and try to decide how we want to try to tackle that. So that'll come back to the finance committee, I think, in fairly short order. And there will be a financial investment that we'll have to make here to do this, but I think it's a very wise use of taxpayer dollars to assure the public that there is a high degree of integrity in the numbers that they see. So I commend the administration for making this happen because I think it's been long overdue. So it'll work, it'll work very well for this council and for future councils. So I think it'll be a real value add. Transfers, I think RCO 320, one of my most favorite resolutions. I think it's back on, we just put it back on the agenda this evening. Darren even likes it now. The encumbrance carryforwards we discussed, that'll be on our February agenda. The number is pretty eye-opening when you look at all of the encumbrances that will get carried forward in the 21, but it just gives you an idea of how much is really going on. I think the number was what, Ms. Wiles, $20 million? So it's sizable, but those are all contracts that are in the works that have already been agreed to. You've got purchase orders and you take that money from 20 and just have it there for Claims come to you with a favorable recommendation from the committee. One other note, we've got a half a million dollar cost to repair the roof on this building. We'll probably fund that from part of the one-year bond this year and proceeds from the 19 one-year bond, but the roof, there's some significant challenges there and so we need to make that repair. I'm not sure timing-wise, do you remember if David said anything about time? Mayor may not know about that, but I mean, timing-wise, probably know about the roof repair. Oh, Lindsay, Ms. Bennett may have some info here. Yeah, that's supposed to be, the bad news is it's a half a million dollar repair, but it's got to be done, so. We're rooting for you. I think that was the bulk of the report, but it was a really good meeting. More news to come on the internal controls. I think that that'll be something that we will all be very happy we delved into it with some real vigor. So that's my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Any questions for Mr. O'Connor?
And Mr. Yousse says I have to put the microphone really close, so I'm trying to follow directions. I just want to clarify for the council and for anyone who's listening in about the encumbrance comments, that is not new expenditures for the city of Noblesville. Those are dollars that we had budgeted to spend this year, that those projects, just because of everything else that's been going on, have been put on hold. So again, that's not $20 million of new money. Those are already projects that have already been budgeted for. It's just probably paying it 21 versus 20.
Good point. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Is there a motion on the claims?
Mr. President, I move to approve the claims.
Second.
Motion and a second. This is a hand vote to approve the claims. All those in favor, right hand. Claims are approved. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Mr. Spalding, we're going to do these two separately. The first one, for previously discussed ordinances, number 47-12-20, council to consider ordinance number 47-12-20 and ordinance approving additional appropriations in the 1937 fire pension fund and establishing a public hearing. Mr. Spalding.
Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, Controller, and the ordinance before you, again, it's second reading and this is about as technical of a additional appropriation as you can have. So what it's doing is recognizing that we had some expenses for certain type of actuarial analysis that has to be done for this fire pension fund that's required by the state and it is actually funded by the state. So there's no cost to the city for this, so the revenue source into the fund is a transfer payment from the state of Indiana. However, technically, for reasons that I described at the last meeting, before we can, or to authorize the spending, I should say, they have to, the amount has to be appropriated by the council, you saying it's okay to spend that money we got from the state for this purpose. So that's what this action will do if you choose to approve it.
Any questions for Mr. Spalding? If there aren't any, I will open the public hearing for ordinance number 47-12-20.
President.
Mr. O'Connor.
Seeing no one from the public coming forward, I move to be close the public hearing for ordinance 47-12-20.
Second. Motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
President, I move to approve ordinance 47-12-20.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve ordinance 47-12-20. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Cummings.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Eight, zero. Ordinance is approved.
Thank you. I am 48-12-20. Council to consider ordinance number 48-12-20 and ordinance approving additional appropriations in the 1925 police pension fund and establishing a public hearing. Mr. Spalding.
Yes, this is in essence a companion to the last ordinance. We actually have two identical funds, one for old police and police officer, I'm sorry, one for old firefighters, which is the one we just did, and this separate pension fund for police officers hired before 1977. Same exact issue, same funding structure, everything's the same except it's a separate fund, so we have to go through the process individually for this fund.
Any questions? Again, we'll open the public hearing for ordinance number 48-12-20.
Mr. President.
O'Connor.
Seeing no one from the public coming forward, I move to close the public hearing for ordinance 48-12-20.
Second. A motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Public hearing is closed.
President, I move to approve ordinance 48-12-20.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve ordinance 48-12-20. Another roll call vote. Ms. Cummings.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Eight, zero. Your ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New ordinances for discussion. Council to consider ordinance number 26-09-20A and ordinance amending ordinance number 26-09-20, a 2021 salary ordinance for appointed officials and employees of the city of Noblesville. Motion introduced.
Second.
Mr. Light.
Thank you, President Hampton, council members, Matt Light, Deputy Mayor. This ordinance in front of you is a product of a review that we performed to look at the positions within the mayor's office and try to align those in terms of the significance of the role and responsibilities that each of those roles have and really to be in a position to be more effective going forward. So it makes two changes to the salary ordinance that we approved last year for 20, earlier this year, I should say, for 2021, and changes the communications manager and operations coordinator positions to be exempt positions as opposed to non-exempt. And then it modifies the bi-weekly salaries for those positions to add the amount that those positions earned in overtime this year. So it's effectively a net neutral, a budget neutral change. We think it's going to allow us to be more effective in doing a number of things, including covering responsibilities, having those positions cover responsibilities that often can take place in the evenings, on the weekends. As a good example, you see Mr. Harrington here covering a council meeting and as you have seen him involved with a lot of the programs, the significant programs of the city, like the Hopeful Holidays Tour and so forth, that often involve kind of off-time. So it helps us to better manage those demands and also gives us a better budget certainty by having the salary amounts as opposed to less certain overtime amounts that would be paid. We've coordinated these changes through the Human Resources Department and the council that they've used for these purposes for a number of years. And just as a reminder, again, this is a budget neutral change. The 002 department budget for this year, the mayor's office department budget was 1.522, which was a 1.5% decrease over the base budget. So I would respectfully request that you pass this ordinance on first reading so that these changes could be effective for the first pay period in January.
Questions for Mr. Light?
President, I would move to waive the rules and approve ordinance 26-09-20A on the first reading.
Second.
So there's a motion and a second to waive the rules for ordinance 26-09-20A and vote on the first reading. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. A motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve ordinance 26-09-20A.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve ordinance 26-09-20A. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Cummings.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Eight, zero. Your ordinance is approved.
Thank you, Ms. Cummings. Item 49-12-20, council to consider ordinance 49-12-20 and ordinance authorizing a position schedule bond for faithful performance of public officials and employees. Question to introduce?
Second.
Mr. Light.
Thank you, President Hampton, council members, again, Matt Light. This ordinance in front of you, as the president indicated, it gives authorization to staff to purchase a position schedule bond. As Mr. O'Connor indicated, this was discussed at the finance committee and it's a product of an effort for us to, of us reviewing the surety bonds that we've had in place to cover public officials and employees. And as you might know, there are certain positions that are specified in statute, like the city judge, the city clerk, the controller, redevelopment commission members, and a few others that by statute are required to have a surety bond. And the effect of these bonds is that if public money's misappropriated, there's a source of funds that can be tapped into to pay back in part the local unit of government that's been affected. Additionally, there's been a change in the law to add an additional category of employees that handle more than $5,000 of public funds annually as part of their official responsibility. So we conducted a review with our departments to identify those positions that exceed that $5,000 threshold on an annual basis. And this approach to obtaining a position schedule bond allows us to put all of those positions into one bond and kind of spread out the risk among those positions. So we've been working with our insurance broker, Walker Hughes, to obtain quotes. We've received one quote back from a national insurance company and we're waiting on a second one and we'll select the one that's most price advantageous once we get that second one received. But this ordinance gives us the authority under statute to, instead of getting individual bonds for each of those. to, instead of getting individual bonds for each of those positions, get this position schedule bond. So as with the previous agenda item, so that we can have this in place to start the, the year, I would request that you pass this on first reading.
Any questions at all for Mr. Light?
President, I would move to waive the rules and approve ordinance 49-12-20 on the first reading.
Second.
Motion and a second to waive the rules for ordinance 49-12-20 and vote on first reading. This is a hand vote, all those in favor. Thank you.
President, I would move to approve ordinance 49-12-20.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve ordinance 49-12-20, Ms. Cummings.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Eight, zero, your ordinance is approved.
Thank you. Moving to miscellaneous number one, council to consider resolution RC 4920, a resolution concerning the acquisition and transfer of real estate. Mr. Murray.
Good evening, President Hampton, members of council, Andrew Murray, economic development director for the record. This item before you was a straightforward request essentially authorizing the acquisition, a transfer of real property located at 266 John Street. To quickly orient you, turning your attention to the screen, the subject property is outlined in red, which is about a third of an acre in size, located on the east side of John Street, just, just north of Logan Street. For background, as some of you will recall, the city has acquired title to three other adjacent parcels as, as outlined in yellow to the exhibit. So this acquisition request does further our land assembly efforts to date. This resolution essentially requests four items. Number one, it declares the city's interest and acceptance of this property. Number two, it authorizes city officials to finalize this transaction with a not to exceed $80,000 purchase price. Number three, identifies a source of funding, which will be from Fund 130, which is the economic development revolving loan fund. And we will replenish that fund by July 1st of next year using tax increment. And then the last component, it authorizes the transfer of not only the subject property's title, but the title of the three parcels outlined in yellow to the redevelopment commission. Procedurally speaking, this item was vetted with the Finance Committee and does come to you with a favorable recommendation. Our next step would then be to go before the redevelopment commission and request their understanding and approval of their role in this transaction with the end goal to close hopefully by the end of January next year. So with that, I will stop there and answer any questions.
Are any questions for Mr. Murray?
President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I'd move that we approve miscellaneous number one, resolution RC-49-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution RC-49-20. This is a hand vote, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, Mr. Murray. Miscellaneous number two, council to consider the 2021 appointments. Deputy Clerk, Ms. Cummings.
I didn't realize I was going to have to do this one.
Ms. Lee didn't tell you that.
No, she didn't, she left that part out. This is for the 2021 council appointments. I don't, do you want me to read through each of these? So it's for the record or?
I don't think you need to.
Okay. Well, obviously, you can see they're all listed right here. So if anyone has any questions, I'll try to answer them.
We did, we did contact all of them, and they all agreed to do this. They weren't voluntold, we, we did reach out.
Yeah. I like that, I've never heard that.
We did ask Mr. Smith while he was out of the country, so he was a little bit.
Yeah, I see that, Mr. Smith, you're, you're ready to serve in the prime minister.
Yes, that's very good.
Any?
President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I would move that we approve miscellaneous number two, 2021 appointments.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the 2021 council appointments. This is a hand vote, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. You did a great job, Ms. Cummings. Moving to miscellaneous number three, council to receive summary of the fiscally neutral fourth quarter appropriation transfers pursuant to resolution RC-03-20. Mr. Barris.
Thank you, council members. As stated, this is a report on small dollar fiscal transfers that were made during the fourth quarter of this year pursuant to RC 0320, which was approved by council earlier in the year. As you've now received this report three other times throughout the year, I'm not going to go through it in too much detail. There is a list of transfers in your agenda packets. In total, there were $46,000 worth of appropriation transfers done under this resolution in November and October. There's two that are over $10,000, so real quick. One of those was $11,000 for deferred compensation match. This, we make an attempt to estimate how much the city will contribute for our deferred compensation match program each year. The budget anticipated $500,000 and ended up being slightly over that. So we have an appropriation transfer of $11,000 from contingency to cover that difference. And then the only other one over $10,000 was for the street department. They had originally anticipated doing some repair work via contractors. Instead, they moved using in-house staff for that repair work. So remove money appropriation authority, that is, from the 300 to the 200 series. If there's any questions on the rest of these, as you look through this list, happy to answer them now, or if you just want to send me an email later, happy to clarify anything that comes up.
Any questions for Mr. Barris? Thank you. There's no action on this at all.
No action is required.
No action. Okay, thank you. Transfer number one, council to consider transfer TA 2620, an appropriation transfer for various unbudgeted costs in the parking meter fund. Also, Mr. Barris.
Thank you, council members. This is an appropriation transfer of $21,000 within the parking meter fund from contingency, authorizing it within the police department budget for expenses that were not originally anticipated when the 2021, the 2020 budget was adopted. So in this case, there's $3,000 for the 200 series, the supplies budget. That covers some signage costs for downtown parking. And then in addition, there's $18,000 for the 300 series, which is roughly split between two separate issues. One covers rental costs for a new, not a new parking lot, but the city's cost in renting parking spaces due to parking displacement caused by the Levinson project. And then the other part deals with credit card convenience fees that are charged by our credit card processing company that the city has incurred. Now, these fees are a bit murky at this point. It's, it was our understanding, or it was the police department's understanding that these fees were being passed on to people that swipe their cards at these parking kiosks. But according to the company that does the processing, that wasn't happening. So somebody needs to pay the fees, and they say it should be us. We're still, the police department, I should say, is still working out whether that happened in the right way and whether they should be giving us our money back or not. In any case, they're looking into how that agreement is structured to make sure we have clarity on that going forward so that we don't have to live with this as a mystery in the future. But at any rate, need to make sure they have the budget to cover this cost so that we don't have a budget issue. So this also handles that. And happy to answer any questions, and we have Assistant Chief Arnold here as well.
Any questions at all for Mr. Barris?
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I'd move that we approve transfer number one, TA-26-20.
Second. Motion and a second to approve TA 2620. This is a hand vote, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. We've reached the end of our meeting this evening. We have council comments. Ms. Wiles.
Mr. President, I would ask Robert Harrington to please come forward so that we can thank him for all of his hard work and effort of putting together the home for the holidays tour. That was a wonderful idea and I think a tremendous success. I think so many people throughout the community love seeing Santa on a different vehicle from our department. And I, I know it was a lot of work and effort that you put together, and I just wanted to say thank you very much for what you did.
That was fun, that's a really neat addition to the city. Any other comments?
I forgot to mention in my speech, you know, this is your last meeting as president, Mr. Hampton, and, you know, we, a lot of cities have struggled to get along and even survive. And, and I think that we, as a council, accomplished a lot this year. I really do appreciate your calm. I was panicked a few times. You calmed everybody down and, and your professional experience you brought to this job was really great during Zoom. I appreciate that, and thank you again for your service this year.
I remember one, one time during the Zoom, I think my old TV days came back, because I think I said, "Welcome back." I'm not on TV, we're doing Zoom. It just kind of, it went crazy there for a second.
Three, two.
Yeah, exactly.
Mr. O'Connor, did you have a comment?
I have a couple. Two things, one, the Small Business Resiliency Grant that the mayor and his team has put out for businesses in Noblesville. The application deadline is January 8th. So for those of you that are watching, that are looking for potential sources of funding, please get your applications in so that those can be considered. And I noticed today, and I suspect maybe others have, the state has come back with another small business grant program. It was in the Inside Indiana Business, I'll give Gary Dixon credit here. But those resources are out there, so if, if you need those, make sure that you go out and put your applications in. If you don't apply, you can't, you can't get the dollars. So we encourage everybody to do that. And thanks to Mr. Spalding and his group, they kind of helped me get through the year on the Finance Committee side. And Mr. Davis will get to make all these presentations next year. So I'm looking forward to his oratory on all things finance. And Merry Christmas to everybody and Happy New Year, however you celebrate the holidays, enjoy it. It's been a trying year in a lot of respects, but there's been a lot of good things that have happened, too. Who would ever thought that somebody could come up with a COVID vaccine inside of nine months? I mean, it just shows you what the ingenuity is like in this country. And so we just need to forge forward and keep doing the things that we're doing. It's been quite an interesting year, and I'm getting ready for some more PPP loans, so wish me good luck.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. O'Connor, anybody else?
I just want to just close by saying thank you. It has been fun and, and, and an interesting journey as, as the president of the council this year. I, I would be remiss if I didn't thank, he's not here tonight, but Mr. Air, a great mentor. He was the past president, he really helped me understand the role. So thank you to Mr. Air. And for Mr. Peterson, for just helping me kind of understand and guide through some of the meetings and things we had to do. Did a little extra work as the president, I didn't really realize it was, but it was. And again, thanks to all the council for supporting me and, and for all your assistance in, in my role a, as the president. So thank you very much. And for everyone out there, happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move. No move.
We are adjourned, thank you.